Hi, I’m Michelle Sutter. I’m a founding member of the Money Out, Voters In Coalition and a co-chair of Move to Amend Los Angeles. I did want to make clear that the move to amend amendment is three parts, that corporations are not people, that money is not the same as speech, and that nothing in this amendment shall be seen to abridge the freedom of the press. I should also say that though I live three blocks south of Santa Monica in Venice, I’ve worked in Santa Monica for 20 years and do consider myself a member of this community. There’s been a lot of talk about this movement that is growing, and the more that it grows, the more talk we hear about the dire consequences that will befall our society the minute this amendment is ratified. And I want to say that absolutely nothing will happen the moment this amendment, the 28th amendment, is ratified. What will happen is that corporations will no longer be able to assert and expect to be guaranteed constitutionally protected rights and privileges. We, the people, will choose to grant them rights and privileges, and they can expect that we would as long as they were serving the public interest, because a thriving, law-abiding, community-enhancing business is good for everyone. But we, the people, need the tools to correct overreaches and censure harmful behaviors, and we’ve lost those tools, as corporations have now so many sort of logic-defying examples of corporations claiming constitutional protections intended for individuals.
Thank you.
Okay. Think Prop 37 last year, I’m sure someone will bring it up. Thanks a lot.
Very good, thank you. Julián Jiménez, and then Chris Gutierrez.
Good evening, members of the Santa Monica City Council. My name is Julián Jiménez, and I am part of Team Marine, which is an environmental organization of young scientists and environmental activists at Santa Monica High School. We focus on ocean acidification, climate change, and plastic pollution. I am here tonight to urge you to vote yes on the, for the move to amend resolution. As a democratic-run country, we, as individuals, could not and should not be compared to big corporations. From what I can recall, big corporations are here to work for us, not control us. By allowing them to have equal rights as individuals, we are giving them that power. If people with big money can speak and those who don’t can’t, then we become a plutocracy, not a democracy. So tell me, is it safe to empower corporations as human beings? Please, think again. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much. I’m sorry, but we express support silently, so you can just wave your hands to clap. Chris Gutierrez, thank you.
Good evening. I am Chris Gutierrez, and I live in the Sunset Park neighborhood of Santa Monica. As you can see, many of us stuck around with you after a long evening of really intricate discussion in a democratic process. This is as it should be, to grapple with issues that safeguard the quality of life. Yet, this is not how it is too often. I’m here to support strongly the move to amend resolution for you to pass. As Justice Stevens has reminded us recently, corporations were not meant to be “we, the people.” They are not part of the establishment of our Constitution. And that is why we have to regard seriously the distrust that our founding fathers had for corporate power. They were greatly limited in the original, in our original establishment of the nation. We lost the tools, as Michelle has said, because after 125 years of Supreme Court rulings that swept privileges, we, the people, through our representative state chartering, privileges awarded to corporations to become rights. And now we default to an economy that is based on corporate, unregulated markets that are driving out of control many of our toughest issues, like the climate change. I was glad that Councilman, once you mentioned our crossing the threshold of a daily average of 400 parts per million of CO2 emissions. That hasn’t happened in 6 million years, never in human history. Why is that happening? We don’t have an energy policy, partly due to the large corporate pressures that have accrued, because they have been awarded human, individual rights in the Constitution. We need to change that. Santa Monica needs to stand confidently with American, millions of Americans and hundreds of communities that are undertaking to rebuild the trust in our democracy and build a fair economy. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Linda Pierre Avila, followed by Aubrey Dandick and Shane Kecken.
Good evening, councilmembers, Linda Pierre Avila. My remarks are in response to a letter that Mr. Larmour sent you opposing this measure. I do support passing this proposal. Historically, corporations started out as entities that were strictly controlled by each parent state that granted their charters. With the passage of time and the states’ needs for corporate revenue increasing, restrictions became more lenient up until the passage, the point of Citizens United decision by the Supreme Court. During the time when states more stringently controlled corporations, there was not impingement of freedom of the press, and small businesses did not unduly suffer, and there is no reason to think that these things would happen now should this amendment become law. Each state charter granting incorporation allows that entity the privilege of doing business within the state. We maintain it should not also connote rights that otherwise should be attributed to a human being. This must be corrected. People have rights, governments have powers, and everything in between has privileges. California corporate law states that, quote, “The purpose of the corporation is to engage in any lawful act or activity for which a corporation may be organized under the general corporation law of California, other than blah, blah, blah,” and it cites some exceptions. It does not say that the purpose of the corporation is to assume the rights of a human being. California has a special section regarding nonprofits and states, “This corporation is a nonprofit, public benefit corporation, and is not organized for the private gain of any person.” Other than that, I noticed that the language describing for-profit corporations and nonprofit corporations is very similar. In both cases, it seemed to me that when discussing rights, the language referred to the directors, board, and individuals, not to the organizational entity itself. This proposed amendment would not deny small business owners their constitutional rights. In fact, I think it could help small business owners by preventing abuses of big corporations. Thank you.
Thank you. Aubrey Dandick, followed by Shane Kecken, Barry Levine, Jerry Rubin.
Good evening, Santa Monica City Council. I should probably say goodnight, because I’m really tired. My name is Aubrey Dandick. I’m a junior at Santa Monica High School, a member of Team Marine. I’m here tonight to advocate for the move to amendment resolution. Who knows what is best for us besides us? American citizens should have an equal voice against corporate interests when discussing or assessing our natural ecosystems and sustainability. Corporate interests focus on lucrative corporate growth. While the citizens of Santa Monica deeply care for our community and want to save our ecosystems and address climate change in the appropriate and realistic manner, Santa Monica needs to take action with this resolution and influence other cities to follow in our lead. Thank you. And youth wants you to ban single-use water bottles, too, please. Good night.
Thank you. Jerry Rubin, to be followed by Mary Beth Fieldler, Fielder, and then Stephen Bass and Michael Feinstein.
Thank you very, very much, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I also urge you to support this, hopefully unanimously. It’s a good grassroots effort. The Supreme Court decision was one of the worst decisions in recent times, and there’s four very wise Supreme Court justices that would say so. It just happens with the appointment of a couple activist Supreme Court judges, in my opinion, on a number of issues now. This has made a mess, is a true issue. This is not an anti-corporation resolution. It’s certainly not anti-free speech. But the last time I heard, corporation cannot run for city council. A corporation cannot sit on our boards or our commissions. People do. This is a very important step you’re taking right now, and it’s a long haul, it’s a difficult endeavor to change our Constitution, but it’s a good effort, and we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth Fieldler, followed by Stephen Bass, Michael Feinstein.
Thank you. I want to just, I think most people are familiar with the detrimental effects of the Citizens United decision on our government and the amount of unregulated money that’s been flowing into our elections, $6 billion spent on the presidential election. But I want to also talk, and actually read, about the recent fabrication of corporate rights under the Constitution goes beyond elections and money in politics. Citizens United is the extreme extension of a corporate rights doctrine that courts have used with increasing aggression and hostility to the judgment of people and our elected representatives since 1980. The courts have used the fabrication of corporate rights, particularly corporate speech, to strike down a wide range of common sense laws in recent years, from those concerning clean and fair elections, to environmental protection and energy, to tobacco, alcohol, pharmaceuticals, and healthcare, to consumer protection, lotteries and gambling, to race relations, and much more. Examples include laws to ensure an even playing field between local, regional, or national businesses that compete with global corporations, such as laws to protect consumer choice by requiring disclosure about food products derived from genetically-modified drug treatments for animals, or laws to protect the public interest, such as limitation on cigarette advertising to protect the public, cigarette advertising near schools, or energy conservation requirements for utility corporations. All these laws have been struck down based on the concept of that these laws have violated a corporation’s First Amendment right to speak. These rights have been used almost exclusively by transnational corporations to evade accountability for harmful products or actions. In a few instances, courts have treated corporations as people with constitutional rights, such as under the Fourth Amendment protection against unreasonable search and seizure. And I know there’s some concern and sort of scare, in my mind, scare tactics about if this passed, that the government could come in and seize mom and pop, you know, businesses and this kind of stuff. But this amendment changes nothing about the rights of human beings, including, so in other words, we all retain our personal, individual rights. The government can’t come in, seize our property, because it’s our property, and as humans, we own it. So a lot of these scare tactics really don’t apply.
Thanks.
I’ll just, because all these people left. We should be able to speak for them.
Okay. We have a question for you from Councilmember Davis.
I’m sorry, I just want to clarify. So if a small business holds a lease on its property in its corporate name, what do you anticipate happening if that corporation doesn’t have rights against unreasonable search and seizure? Because the people, a corporation is separate. I mean, without getting into it, a corporation, an individual can’t assert rights on behalf of the corporation, can’t say, “I’m Fred Smith,” but the leasehold is held in the name of Jones Incorporated. Jones Incorporated doesn’t have any search and seizure rights. What happens?
Well, the individuals who own Jones Incorporated don’t lose their individual rights.
Right, but the leasehold is in the name of the corporation. The individual doesn’t have any rights in the premises, because the leasehold’s held in the name of the corporation.
Well, from my understanding, that the rights of employees, executives, and others against search and seizure would, I mean, before, for many, many years in this country, corporations did not have, were not afforded constitutional rights, and the government wasn’t able, there were other legal bases with which we were able to protect ourselves from search and seizure. This whole concept of corporate constitutional rights, the idea that the Bill of Rights created by our founding fathers to protect us against an overreach of government should apply to Monsanto and to all these multinational corporations, is really, in our minds, of gross distortion of the concept of our Bill of Rights.
And I understand that, and I think you’ve answered my question.
Yeah, so the individuals who own the businesses retain their rights.
Are you an attorney?
I’m not. I guess I’m a citizen. Does that count?
Well, no, I mean, I’m just, I’m just trying to figure out the, your interpretation, you’re interpreting the law.
I’m just saying, as a citizen, as a, as a human being who’s protected by the Bill of Rights, this is my understanding.
No, I understand that, and I’m not trying to, I’m not trying to provoke you. I’m just, I’m just trying to figure out where you’re coming from on that. I just want to understand.
Okay, well, Jeff Clements, who wrote the book, is an attorney. He’s, and he’s the one who argued the case in Massachusetts about restricting tobacco advertising near schools.
No, I get that, and I’m familiar with that case. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Stephen Bass, I take it’s not here? Oh, you are here. Oh, right. You just weren’t standing up. Very good.
Don’t hold that against me. I do have a new appreciation, having been here since 6:30, for what you must go through every week. With respect to your question, and just to clarify, are you talking about the government coming in, unlawful search and seizure?
We can’t have a back and forth.
Okay.
Yeah, you just want to do your presentation.
All right, well, that’s fine. I mean, I think the point that was made is basically the individuals who have the shareholders, in any corporation or any nonprofit, Supreme Court said in NAACP versus Alabama, that it, you know, the rights of the members of the organization, they have standing to assert those rights, those would still remain the same. So it would be the same for the taking of property, unlawful search and seizure, First Amendment rights. The whole panoply would still be there, as they were for the first almost 100 years of our democracy, before the Supreme Court first said that corporations had some rights, and then another 100 years before they really got into giving them all full human rights. So we’ve been, had a prosperous democracy. We will continue to do that, even with this amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Feinstein, followed by Steve Duran, Charles Fredericks, Marcy Winergrad.
So, hi again. Two points to make. First, I just want to draw the consistency between the excellent sustainability of rights, rights of nature that you all worked on. That was necessary, because there are elements in our society that are driven not by the social and ecological criteria that we embrace, but corporations, by definition, are there to maximize profits. And some may voluntarily take on those values, but by their definition, that’s not how they’re set up. And that’s a lot of the reason why we’ve had cities going ahead and passing what you guys did, which was unbelievably awesome. So this is a case where that kind of grow or die without any reference to the social or environmental context also infects our politics in an unnatural way. And that kind of money is very destructive for that reason, and that’s, I think, consistent to support this kind of approach. Now, Councilmember Davis brings up some of the issues around the edge, and unfortunately, while I left the room, I’m sick about this, but my laptop fell off my seat, and my screen is screwed up. And I had a few Supreme Court cases that folks cite to say why nonprofits don’t need corporate status to ensure the constitutional rights of their members, their donors, at all. So I wanted to cite those for you, but I am convinced, at least from the research that I was able to do, that the concerns that we heard from Mr. Larmour beforehand on the officerofSantaMonica.com, the Santa Monica Lookout site, really don’t apply, and that really the only nonprofits that would benefit from having exemption would be the AstroTurf fake nonprofits that are using nonprofit status to spread a political agenda. So I urge you to pass this, and I commend the staff on their work. Thanks.
Thank you. Nice timing.
Question from Mr. Feinstein.
Oh, we have a question from Councilmember McEwen.
Would one of those cases be in a NAACP versus Alabama, for instance?
You are always prepared, and I appreciate it. Right on, Kevin. Yeah.
Thank you.
Steve Duran, followed by Charles Fredericks, Marcy Winergrad.
I am speaking on behalf of the Executive Board of the Santa Monica Democratic Club, excuse me. We urge the city council to support the city staff recommendation that the city council adopt the resolution. In addition to the list of reasons mentioned in the staff report and attachment one thereto, the executive board would also like to call to the council’s attention other jurisdictions that have passed similar resolutions to abolish corporate personhood. On May 1st, 2013, Maine joined West Virginia, Colorado, Montana, New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, California, Rhode Island, Maryland, Vermont, New Mexico, Hawaii, and Washington, DC, which have called for an amendment to overturn Citizens United. San Francisco, Chicago, Richmond, California, Ashland, Oregon, Eugene, Oregon have also passed similar resolutions. Locally, the voters in the city of Los Angeles will, this May 21st, also have this issue on their ballot. And likewise, Assembly Bill 644 will be added to the California 2014 general election ballot, which will ask voters this same issue. Representative Adam Schiff from Burbank recently introduced the 18th bill to the U.S. House of Representatives to overturn Citizens United since 2010, and he recently acknowledged that federal legislation needs backing from state and local votes. He said that, “As more Americans see the impact of enormous and anonymous spending on our electoral system, pressure will build to bring a constitutional amendment up for debate. It’s time for the city of Santa Monica to join this fight.” For these reasons, the executive board of the Santa Monica Democratic Club urges the city council to support this resolution put forth by the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Also well timed. Charles Fredericks, followed by Marcy Winergrad and Anjali Kronheim.
My name is Charles Fredericks. I live in Santa Monica. I operate two small businesses, one of which I’m incorporating. I speak in support of the resolution. I’m also a citizen. I recognize a distinction between my rights and duties as a citizen and the opportunities afforded to me under, in operating in commerce, from the possibility to incorporate. I see no conflict between those two. However, I would find it a moral and ethical conflict within myself if I took advantage of the rights afforded me, or should I say privileges, by incorporation to divert the political process away from what was the, basically, the will of the majority of the people. And I think that’s what we have here, that our, our democracy is potentially at risk because we have the ability for power afforded by the corporate structure to overcome the will of the majority of the people. That is obviously the sad case in the way our, our political structure has become corrupted over time. Now, we have an opportunity through our local and municipal and state levels to reassert the values that we find within ourselves as citizens and as human beings, so that that schism that we each find within ourselves, where we go off during the day to operate a business to support ourselves and our families, does not come into conflict with our own health and well-being as human beings. There’s no reason why they should be in conflict, and yet somehow, in the, in the way in which they’re conducted in the marketplace, this has come to be the case. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, almost good morning, right? My name’s Anjali Kronheim. I’m the LA organizer with California Common Cause. Common Cause commends the Santa Monica City Council for bringing forward this resolution that addresses such a critical threat facing our democracy. Common Cause is a nonpartisan citizens lobby and leading organization working to hold government accountable and reduce the undue influence of big money in politics. We support the resolution that you passed to overturn Citizens United recently, but now in front of you, you can even do more. The Constitution exists to protect the rights of people, real people, living human beings. Corporations don’t breathe, they don’t fight in wars, or have children. We create corporations for specific economic purposes and give them special powers and privileges to carry out their important role in society. Yet, in Citizens United and other cases, the court ruled that corporations should be considered people with constitutional rights. While the shareholders who form corporations do indeed have rights that protect their property and other corporate interests, the court failed to understand that we, the people, can actually limit these special powers we have granted for their intended purposes. We don’t have to let corporate treasury funds drown out the voices of actual people in our elections. As four dissenting justices in Citizens United noted, corporations have special privileges not enjoyed by real people, such as limited liability, perpetual life, and favorable treatment of the accumulation and distribution of assets, which allow them to spend huge sums of money on campaign messages that have little or no correlation with beliefs held by real people. Legislators like you all over the country have passed resolutions calling for such an amendment. It would really do our state and country proud if we could add Santa Monica to that list. I’m a proud resident of Santa Monica, live in the Ocean Park neighborhood, so I hope you pass the resolution.
Question.
Question from Councilmember McEwen.
Ms. Kronheim, I’m really glad you’re here tonight representing Common Cause, because the one, and I think only, letter we got opposing the action before the council tonight says that if we were to pass this, Common Cause would be denied First Amendment rights, even the right to advocate for political reform. Is it your understanding that your First Amendment rights are at risk here?
No, you kind of heard Stephen Bass talk about how nonprofits and a couple other speakers wouldn’t be affected by this. People can still have the rights to all the amendments, it’s just, we don’t need to have the tax status or corporate status to do that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because that was specifically mentioned in the only letter I’ve seen opposing our passage of this.
Yeah, I saw that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joel Ferris. I’m an educator, and I live in Ocean Park. You’ve heard all the details, what’s happening. I tend to generalize. From the time I was born, I’ve seen a creep toward fascism, corporate domination. We see the use of money influencing our governments, individuals who make decisions for us. And with Citizens United, I think we have to draw the line. I support this resolution, and I most sincerely hope each and every one of you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the items before us, we close the public hearing, and Councilmember McEwen is in the queue first.
Well, I’m proud to live in a society and a nation that vests very important and inalienable rights in human beings, but it’s troublesome that it has come to be that corporations are assumed to have those same rights. This matters before us, I think, at a very opportune time. It comes between the May 10th national mobilization for Move to Amend and an opportunity coming up later this month for the residents of Los Angeles to vote on Proposition C, which would put the city of LA behind the move to amend. And I’m glad we concluded here just before midnight, because I’m sure there are a lot of people listening on KCRW Santa Monica who will be able to vote in that election, and I hope that they will go to the polling place knowing that we in Santa Monica support the move to amend. So I will move the staff recommendation. Second.
And we have Councilmember Davis next.
I, I’m troubled by the move to amend resolution. I think back when we considered it the first time, I raised a number of issues, and I, my opinion on those issues hasn’t changed. We did adopt a resolution that talked about getting corporate money out of politics, that certainly recognized that corporations shouldn’t share the same status as people, and I don’t think anyone disagrees about that. The move to amend resolution, however, for example, doesn’t differentiate between nonprofits, for example, and for-profit corporations. And what I’ve heard in response to, to that concern is, well, the people who are the shareholders, if you will, of the corporation, will be able to assert their rights individually. And I’ve only been practicing law for 34 years, so I could be wrong about this, but that’s not how it works in the real world. When you sue a corporation, or when you take an action against a corporation, the corporation acts on its own behalf. So for example, if a for-profit or a nonprofit corporation were to be the signatory on a lease and have a leasehold interest in a property, and it did not have Fourth Amendment rights against unreasonable search and seizure, which require that a judge find that there’s probable cause of a crime having been committed, and issues a warrant to allow someone to go onto those premises and seize documents, books, records, whatever, photographs, that the fact that there might be an individual shareholder in the corporation somewhere who might say- who might say, "Wait a minute, I want to assert my rights," isn't going to help, because the leasehold's held in the name of the corporation. Now, the NAACP versus Alabama case is an interesting case, because what that case actually held is basically that the rights of association of the individual members of the NAACP could be asserted by the NAACP on behalf of the individual shareholders or the individual members, not the other way around. It didn't hold that the individual members of the NAACP could assert the rights of the NAACP. It said the NAACP, in order to protect the freedom of association of the members of the NAACP as an organ, as a nonprofit corporation, was capable of asserting their rights. So I think we need to be careful here, because I think that there may be some unintended consequences. And a lot of organizations, you know, the, I think there's a little bit of confusion about the Citizens United case. That is not the seminal case, if you will, that says corporations are people. The corporations have status of personhood cases go back dozens of years, I think almost 100 years. In fact, I think in here it says it was a Santa Clara case, it's the 100th anniversary of it or something.
1886.
Right, so it goes back, it goes back a substantial ways, and there was a whole series of substantive due process cases that interpreted very different ways. But for example, some of our cherished institutions are nonprofit corporations, and I'm very concerned about limiting their rights to assert, their ability to assert certain rights. And if you're wondering what some of those cherished organizations are, the Santa Monica Museum of Art. Should we, should they be subject to warrantless search and seizure? I don't know. The City of Hope, the LA County Federation of Labor, the Church in Ocean Park, Clergy and Laity, United for Economic Justice, these are all corporations. They're not bad institutions. A corporate, just because some organization is a corporation doesn't make it a bad institution. There are some corporations who do bad things, just like there are some individual human beings who do bad things. But for my concern about the move to amend resolution that we have in front of us and that we're being asked to adopt tonight is that it doesn't distinguish between for-profits and nonprofits. It doesn't exempt labor unions, who often, as I said, for the LA County Federation of Labor, for example, operate through a corporate structure to some extent. And it doesn't, I'm not sure it's necessary, because to the extent that the reason we're being asked to adopt this resolution is because we want to express our opinion that corporate money should not have an undue influence on politics, I don't disagree with that, but we've already adopted that resolution. And just in case people didn't have that in front of them, what we said was that we support efforts to ensure the fairness of the electoral process by reducing the influence of money upon elections, including placing limits upon corporate donations to political campaigns, and by rejecting the notion that corporations must be treated the same as natural persons with regard to corporate participation in political campaigns. And we said that we call upon elected federal representatives to safeguard the people's rights of self-governance through legislation, including but not limited to a constitutional amendment that protects the democratic process and our individual rights against the threats posed by the decision of Citizens United versus FEC, and that we support education to increase and enhance public discourse about the risks to our democracy arising from unfettered campaign spending by private and special interest entities that are neither natural persons nor voters, and therefore should not exert control over the government for and of the people. So I think that a lot of the things people are trying to accomplish with this new resolution we've already accomplished, and so I can't support it in its current form.
Any other council members who want to speak on this now? Councilmember Vasquez, you're thinking about it?
I'm going, yeah. I just had a question, and I wanted to maybe refer to our attorneys. Is it true, what I'm hearing, that in fact this would penalize some of these forementioned, actually, I think, pretty progressive nonprofits?
The measure that's before you doesn't distinguish between corporations. It treats nonprofits and for-profit corporations the same. It wouldn't penalize anyone on its face, but it applies equally to all corporations.
Regardless of their for-profit or nonprofit?
Whether profit, nonprofit, good, bad, it applies to all corporations.
So I, for one, intend to support this. I think that while these distinctions are important, and I respect Councilmember Davis's arguments, it's also important to make stand, to show that those abuses that I think are described here and the problems that are inherent in a system that allows people to organize and essentially corporation, the existence of corporations to allow people to organize, aggregate capital, and shed liability. And unfortunately, that shedding of liability extends beyond just loss of your capital. It also means shedding responsibility for actions of corporations that you're invested in. And that, to me, is a fundamental problem that move to amend seeks to justify, turn around for us. So I'll vote in support of the motion, and I don't see, oh, Councilmember McKeon.
Well, I'll close discussion as the maker of the motion by pointing out that none of the good things that the nonprofits that Councilmember Vasquez mentioned do depend on their pretending that they're human beings. They can do those good things, and corporations that have good intent can do good things. All this move to amend says is that corporations are not people. They're not natural people, and our Supreme Court has gone in the direction more and more of assuming that corporations have the same rights as flesh and blood human beings. And I think it's time for us to say, stop.
So I think we can have a vote.
All right. Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Holbrook?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Mayor Protamode?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
And Mayor Connor Abson.
So the motion carries, and resolution is passed, and thank you for coming out and speaking to everyone who's still here.